I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call please.
Councilor Bein.
President.
Councilor Gado.
Here.
Councilor Katerina.
Here.
Councilor Hayes.
Here.
Councilor Rowan.
Here.
Councilor Shadon.
President. Uh, general public comment, uh, anyone wishing to address the town council at this time on any matter that is not on the agenda otherwise should approach the podium and three minutes, state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Flaherty. Uh, actually with, uh, in Augusta, uh, the family owns some property at Pinewood Circle. So have some connections here to Scarborough. And, uh, the reason I'm here is, uh, asking, uh, Scarborough to consider participating in the Spirit of America Volunteer Recreation Program. This is a program that's very common throughout the counties of Hennessy, Clog and Kennebec, Winkin, Sagard Hawk, Somerset and Waldo Counties. Uh, last year in those six counties, uh, virtually eighty percent of the towns participated in the program. This is the first year that, uh, Cumbolin County has been invited really to participate. And what happens is, uh, there's no fee whatsoever.
I'm going, sorry.
Oh, there's no fee whatsoever for the call. Um, towns are asked to pick a person, project or group to receive the Spirit of America Foundation Tribute for Outstanding Community Service. Uh, what should happen is that, uh, the recognition should take place, uh, in April, which is National Volunteer Month or the, uh, annual town meeting which Scarborough would have. Uh, here is a copy of, uh, something similar to what Scarborough received. I can pass this around, actually you may keep this. And it said pretty much the same information that Scarborough accepted, it said, uh, town council instead of, uh, board of select. Uh, so what's, uh, the, the, the first and most important step is the recognition on the local level. This program started in Augusta, uh, and the first one was presented in the early nineteen nineties and the program has been experienced. So, uh, at this point, questions?
Great, uh, we'll be in touch with you to, council will probably have the opportunity to discuss this at some point, make a decision as to, you a little more investigation, uh, and then, uh, be in touch to discuss it with you. So if you can leave us your contact information with the town manager.
Yes, I have, Mr. President.
Then, uh, we'll be able to follow up. Thank you.
Great, a pleasure. Thanks so much.
Anyone else who'd like to, uh, address the town council at this time? Uh, minutes of June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Uh, adjustments to the agenda, none at this time. Uh, Chris Warren, I'll sign at the end of the meeting. Uh, order sixteen dash forty-two, seven p.m. public hearing and second reading for an amendment to the town of Scarborough official zoning map to rezone the parcel located off of Southgate Road identified as map U thirty-seven lot three A as shown on the town assessor's map from the general business district called B three district to the industrial district, I district. Uh, we'll ask, uh, Karen Martin to introduce this so that people are again familiarized with what is being proposed by this check. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Karen Martin with Scarborough Economic Development Corporation, uh, is here tonight presenting, um, a request for the zone change by Mr. Raymond Labonte. Um, again, as, um, the chair said, it is to change a lot that actually is, um, abuts a leer and, um, is on Southgate Road. It is a request to change from B three to, um, industrial. Um, the proposed project is going to be a building with, uh, small units for small manufacturers to, to locate in. And the reason we need the change or the reason, uh, the change is being requested is that under the B three zone, um, small manufacturers really aren't allowed. And the types of, of uses that I think were envisioned for this project were the small landscapers, small manufacturers, builders, that type of thing. And, um, they fit much better in the industrial zone. And given that it already borders the industrial zone, it's just moving the line over one lot, it seemed to make a lot of sense from, um, both the planning department and, um, the long range planning committee and certainly for economic development purposes. Um, again, the proposal is to do a, uh, you know, one building with perhaps five different units in it. And I think originally I had said that Mr. Labonte was going to move his business in it. Um, I think I was more aggressive than, than he was. He, he, he may still stay in the Southgate unit, um, but he will be owning these five units. And so that whether Mr. Labonte, um, moved his business there is, is still up in the air. Um, anyway, so it's a pretty straightforward zone change. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions and, um, what's your pleasure?
Uh, questions before we move beyond Karen? Karen, can you speak to the planning board?
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, the planning board did review it. They held, held a public hearing. Um, during the public hearing, uh, there were, um, there were no comments, but the planning board did discuss it, um, and they unanimously supported the zone change.
And, uh, the planning board proceeding, uh, comes with the notice to, uh, all property owners who abut the property in question?
Traditionally it does not because it's a commercial project, but because there was a request, um, we did the extra effort, um, to reach out to the, um, abutter. So, um, the SEDCO office sent out notices to all the property owners. And then because I know there's some renters, uh, you know, Max Deli and that, that strip center is, is really diagonally across from this. And I went out and delivered, uh, personally some, some flyers and explained what the situation was.
Good. Thank you. Other questions of Karen? Thank you, Karen. Uh, public comments? Uh, anyone wishing to comment on this matter, please approach the podium. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second. Uh, discussion. Councilor Gado.
I just wanted to thank Karen for, um, reaching out to the homeowners. I do appreciate that. And, uh, I, I know it was a little extra step, so, uh, I certainly appreciate that. Makes me feel a lot better. Thank you.
Other comments, councilor, Karen?
Uh, yes, just as a reminder, this was also discussed at length by long range planning committee, uh, and they were very enthusiastic about it. I'm very happy to hear that the planning board had no issues also, so I will support this.
Other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Order sixteen dash forty-three, a seven p.m. public hearing and second reading for, uh, amendments to the town of Scarborough's opening ordinance regarding multifamily housing allowances and standards in the town's residential districts. Again, I would ask Karen Martin to introduce this matter.
Karen Martin with Scarborough Economic Development. I'm a poor substitute for Dan Bacon, who has, uh, unfortunately had an accident, so he is not able to be here tonight. Um, so this, this project or the, the, this proposal really is, uh, similar to, um, the proposal that you approved, um, a few months ago with regard to the town and village center zone. And what it does is it takes, um, some liberties with, uh, our, it, it actually allows the, um, more flexibility with respect to multifamily development within, um, a few zones. And really what we're looking at are the village residential zones and the traditional neighborhood development, um, overlay zones. And basically what we're doing is saying, let's take away this limit on the number of units that can occur in a building and let's limit the size and bulk of the building. And that's really, um, more akin to some of the work even that, that was done down in Higgins Beach and talking about form. Um, so at this point, um, what the amendments do is say up to seventy-five hundred, you can have a seventy-five hundred square foot building, you have to meet all the standards of the zone that are required. You have to meet the overall density, um, within a project, but within that single building, we're not going to limit the number of units. And that really provides some more flexibility, um, for developers to do smaller units, um, and really make their projects work, um, you know, for the market. And that's the bulk of that. There are a few other housekeeping changes that are in there, um, that you'll see that are really just, um, really updating some consistency, um, for the other units. But these changes, um, do apply to the Village Residential Two, BR Four, and again, the traditional neighborhood development overlay. And these projects are, this proposal was reviewed at length by the long range planning committee. Lots of discussion about the role of, uh, density and how these type of flexibility can, can really promote some more diverse types of development. At the planning board, there were, um, there was great support of this project, so there were no negative comments and they, um, approved this unanimously at the board. If I can answer any other questions?
Questions of Karen? Councilor Karen?
Actually, I just have a comment and, uh, again, being on long range planning, Karen did a lot of work on this and brought forth a lot of, um, good points, some of the points being akin to, so super sheltered affordable housing, um, is in the workshop, that this will allow some flexibility for, uh, developers to develop, um, granted they'll be market rate housing, um, um, but it gives them some flexibility to do like a one bedroom, for example, or smaller two bedrooms or whatever, whatever is necessary. It doesn't change the footprint of, of these buildings at all, which to me was the important piece. So, again, I will vote to support this.
Any other comments? Thank you, Karen. Uh, public, anyone from the public who'd like to address this matter, please approach the podium. May I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Uh, we discussed this matter at length, uh, at first reading. Uh, it was, uh, strongly supported at that time. It appears to be, uh, an effective modification of our zoning to allow more flexibility, but yet without having any adverse impact on the size of the structures. Uh, and so, uh, it seems to have been well supported. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Uh, old business, now this is time, new business, order sixteen dash, uh, forty-eight, act on the request for a mass gathering permit from Beechridge Speedway for a mass gathering permit for the Nitro Circus located at Seventy Holmes Road, scheduled for Saturday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen.
Chief Villal over here, he is the point person for mass gathering permit, so I think he'd be best to, uh...
Thank you, chief. Can you give us a little bit of a background on this?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The owner of Beechridge Speedway, Andy Cusack, has, uh, contracted with the Nitro Circus to come and put on a show in August. Um, they have submitted the typical mass gathering permit application process that's been reviewed by staff. Um, they're, we're really not anticipating much more of a crowd than would assemble during one of their normal busy, uh, racing events. Um, and I submitted a memo that recommends approval from staff for their permit tonight.
Like, just for the council and the public's benefit, what is the trigger for the mass gatherings? A thousand people attendance or twelve hundred?
I believe it's a thousand.
Thousand. Good, uh, and, uh, do you find anything in order?
Yes, everything's in order. There are some fine details that we haven't worked out yet, but, uh, we've got a longstanding relationship with, uh, the track and the, the, uh, employ police officers every week for their normal shows, so we're going to be able to work through those details once we get the final, uh, details from the Nitro Circus. That's what we're kind of waiting on. There's a couple of questions.
Thank you. Questions for the chief? Councilor Avery?
Just out of curiosity, what the heck is Nitro Circus? Do you know?
Tom, would you like to speak?
I'm going. My brother-in-law is taking me. Uh, it's, it's some sort of high-octane motorsport. It's like, it involves, uh...
Buncho type.
Buncho motorcycle.
I'm sure people are asking that.
I'm sure.
So, um, this is kind of a hot button topic apparently lately. Um, this is permitting, uh, pyrotechnics and/or fireworks, including any associated fire personnel or apparatus requirements. I assume that's a professional fireworks display, not individuals, or am I mistaken? That's correct. We anticipate that the applicant is going to be coming in for a fireworks permit. Typically their shows do involve some approximate fireworks. Um, I don't believe it's going to be a display show similar to what Beechridge does for the, for the July weekend events, but we anticipate some special effects or approximate stuff and that would all be permitted under our display fireworks ordinance as a separate permit. Thank you.
Good. Other questions to the chief? Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Uh, any member of the public who would like to address this, uh, order? Please approach the podium. May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Councilor Gado?
I'd just like to say I may not be attending, but I'm sure I'll hear it.
You will.
On a clear night, you do very...
I do, I do normally anyway, that's right.
For the comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Unanimous. Uh, any special committee reports and liaise zone reports? Uh, first, let me step down.
Well, I've already been advised to keep my comments very short. I will do that. Um, you have a piece of paper in front of you, compliments of Donna Bailey, the, um, uh, school board chair, uh, fast facts from the NEA. Uh, it's basically looking at Maine in terms of teacher salaries, where we're positioned in the rest of New England. Um, this was certainly something that she felt that was important to share with the council, um, so I offered to, to distribute that. It's also going to be going up on the school board's website as well, so if, um, the public wants to look at it, it's, uh, it's an interesting read to say the least, I think. Um, no meetings, uh, from the school board since then. Um, Superintendent Kunkenberger is, is on board now. She started, uh, I believe on July twenty-eighth. She will be giving a presentation to the board and the general public, uh, about her introductory plan and what she, you know, how she plans to, to, uh, come into the district, so looking forward to seeing that as well. Uh, energy has not met yet. I think we're meeting in a week or two, uh, to discuss, um, a few things on the agenda, so we'll have some report after that. Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, quite briefly. Um, I'll try to be brief also. From a committee point of view, the, the rules and policy committee did meet this month. They've been working on some amendments to the, to the policies and procedural manual, which will be remained. Um, we've worked through that process. They're, they're just being drafted. We hope to bring it back to this group early September for action, so that's it. The next thing on our list to kind of take a look at too is we've started to take a look at that suggestion, uh, the fund balance policy, so we'll be starting to work on that, you know, in August through, through the fall. The senior group met, they've been pretty busy. Um, they are, there are just some real quick announcements. They're still working through some of this. There has been the, the traditional Wednesday lunches. That may be moving to Monday because they're running into some issues with the space where they are. They're trying to resolve that. They hope not to change it. Best to stay tuned for that. Um, they're thinking a little bit about kind of changing their committee structures and asking for volunteers, so if anybody's out there is interested in participating in seniors group on some of these committees, and they're trying to break themselves out into four sort of working committees to make recommendations. One is on outreach. How do they kind of reach the community, different ways of communicating? The second one will be about membership. How do they, how do they reach more seniors? How do they get them engaged in, in the programs? Third will be about programs and the fourth will be, as we talked about in the budget process, there is sort of a recreational facility sort of in works being proposed, looked at, so that's how they're going to kind of structure themselves. They're going to have a senior barbecue on, on, um, August twenty-third. And for those that are interested, they, they have made a change, those with membership in the senior group, for all of the Scarborough High School's sporting events, the opening games, they will get free admission to the opening, uh, games and events. So, just for those that are interested. Then every, on movies, third Monday every month, on seven eighteen and eight fifteen, there, there's movies. It'll be at one-thirty at the Scarborough High School on a tournament. Um, other two committees that did meet just recently, the other night, and Tom did join us, um, was coastal waters and harbor and shellfish. And really the conversation there was really trying to, as, as we all know, trying to look at how we use our, our assets as a community, our waterfronts, our working peers, our access to the water. Um, and actually I think it was a pretty productive meeting. There's, there is a spirit of compromise and trying to find ways that we can work together to honor allowing fishermen to be able to still have access, the commercial worker have access to the water so they can come and go on their boats and other things, while at the same time allowing recreational users to come down and use the waterways and other things. So, um, it's been kind of a, a contentious conversation for a while, but I think we made some progress the other night. Tom, thanks for joining us. It got us to a, at least a place to start moving forward, so thank you. And I think with that, that pretty much sums up.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Beva?
New Year's tomorrow's first.
Councilor Katerina?
Joy. Good to do it. Um, I, all I have to report on is Conservation Commission. We met Monday night for close to two hours. And what we're working on is, you recall we had a workshop, uh, with the town council regarding vulnerability and resiliency of Scarborough and, and assets and whatever in Scarborough. So what we're working on is, um, exactly who we're going to talk to and when and what the final results will look at, so it's more the process. So in August, our meeting is August eighth, I think, I'm talking off the top of my head. Um, but the, uh, second Monday of August and we will, um, work more on that, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Rowan?
Uh, the Scarborough Housing Alliance met. Um, we discussed a, a few issues, one being the, uh, the changes to the QAP, which we had the workshop about tonight, uh, or, uh, which impacted the workshop that we had tonight. On advice of, um, some of the more knowledgeable members, we, we decided that there wasn't much point in, um, advocating for changes in that QAP because of the, uh, the nature of the, the main housing alliance. When they, when they put out a proposal, they don't change it. So, uh, that public hearing was, uh, was in June and as expected, they didn't make any changes. Um, we also discussed the, um, providing some guidance to, um, developer at the Eastern Village regarding, um, his, uh, or, or his partial fulfillment of his, um, affordable housing, uh, incentive, um, density, density incentive. He is intending to, um, have some rental units, some of which will be market rate and some portion of which will be, uh, uh, affordable housing, income qualified. Um, and so, uh, that body is trying to, uh, make suggestions about, uh, what that means. And that, uh, the hope is to have that finalized at our next meeting, um, as that project has to go back before the, the planning board. SEDCO also met. Uh, we met jointly with the planning committee and the long range planning committee over at, um, Town and Country's new headquarters over on, um, let's see, Little Dolphin Drive. Um, and we got a tour of the facility, which was the highlight. That is an amazing office building. And if you haven't seen it, I suggest you drive in and knock on the door. Um, it's very impressive. But we also talked about, uh, so that actually took up a lot of time. We got a tour, we got a, uh, the, the CEO spoke to us for a little bit and we had a nice conversation. Um, he actually is a long-term, his family is a long-time Scarborough resident. Um, and then we also talked about Haggis Parkway, um, as a larger group, um, and we're still muddling about what we can do there.
Thank you. Councilor Beva?
Thank you, uh, for giving the time. Uh, really quick notes, first, library trustees actually are, have part of the summer off. Their next meeting is not until August, in which they're going to be hopefully finalizing their strategic plan and, uh, their goal is to provide so that we may, maybe make a presentation, um, in the fall. Um, EcoMaine has the summer off, but, uh, um, they're going to be facing some challenges and change in leadership as well as some, uh, market issues, so that's going to be important to us regarding solid waste. I'll keep you up to date on that. And last, on finance, um, July, we've decided to take off, I believe, August. Um, we haven't set a date yet, but the two dates are either the tenth or the twenty-fourth. I think that, uh, we're shooting probably for the twenty-fourth. The time will change. We were having them at four o'clock, but my schedule doesn't allow that, so they will be at six o'clock on that, on, you know, that Wednesday and we'll get back to work. I'm also reaching out to the joint, uh, to the school board so that we can close out last year's progress that we made on the budget and begin next, next cycle.
Very good. Uh, I attended the SEDCO meeting as well with, uh, Council Rowan. Uh, the Town and Country Credit Union building is, uh, a little bit disguised, uh, back there. Uh, people don't really realize that it's there, but it's a, a very modern interior design. Uh, every partition is removable and easily relocated. Uh, it really was built to, uh, continuously meet the needs of, uh, businesses and it's a bit of a model, uh, of many visitors have been going and, uh, seeking to see what's being done there, so it is a very interesting, uh, content. Uh, town managers report.
Yes, a couple of quick updates if I could. Uh, been using my time since we last met, really doing housekeeping, you know, closing out the fiscal year, starting it up for the new year, uh, where there's a flurry of bidding activity for all the capital equipment and vehicles that's in full, full form right now. Also a lot of improvements happening, uh, by virtue of the, the budget approval. So it's a, it's a busy time. Uh, it's quieter by way of phone calls and email, but it's busy nonetheless. I want to give a couple of construction updates. Uh, our Black White Road resurfacing project is done, but for a little final striping and Councilor Hayes pointed out, uh, an improvement we might be able to catch before they do that, so I'll get on that in the morning. And then the Oak Hill pedestrian improvement project is largely done and operational, there's a, a couple of fine tunes yet to go, but heavy lifting is done. The big one I want to make, uh, you and the, and the public aware of is Cummings Road. If anyone's traveled that area, uh, this is the area behind Target, if you will, on your way to Westbrook. Uh, this is a joint project between Scarborough and South Portland. Uh, project limits essentially are from Payne Road all the way through the Ryan Hill Road intersection up to Gannett Drive in South Portland, or actually in Westbrook at that This project will be resurfacing in certain areas, but in the low point, if you can picture going over the, uh, the bridge deck there, over the turnpike, there's a very low point to, as you move up toward the Target entrance. That's going to be filled in about three feet, so they're going to take that low point out of it. And much of that work will be occurring next, next week. We expect that base pavement down by the end of July, uh, but until then, there's likely to be monolane traffic. So traffic will always be allowed through, you don't have to wait your turn. Uh, Main Turnpike Authority is doing all sorts of works on, on bridge decks and ramps all over southern Maine, so just beware. Um, the, I have been in touch with Councilor, um, Rowan. There's some work over at the Two-Rod Road overpass, uh, and there's potentially some noise issues that may affect folks in close proximity, so hopefully it doesn't disrupt too much. Also, uh, really spawned from complaints or comments we received here at Town Hall and also discussions with, uh, Council Donovan, Council Katerina and St. Clair. also discussions with Council Donovan, Council Katerina, and St. Clair, we put together a very quick poll on fireworks, and this was intended really to kind of get a sense of what the community's thinking. Whether this materializes into anything in front of ordinance or otherwise remains to be seen, but clearly, we've touched a nerve. There's been really tremendous response. This went up middle of the afternoon on Friday, and as of four o'clock this afternoon, we have 730 respondents. It is quick and dirty, I will admit. It's two questions. We do not limit the number of times you can take it, and that's done really because, you know, we're not requiring them to give us their email address, those sorts of things. I do have the ability of looking at, I don't have email addresses, but I know when people are taking, taking it, and you can, you can see a pattern. There are certain cases where people will take it multiple times.
It's a different.
But nonetheless, the quick takeoff at this point, and we'll let it run for a bit longer, but it's about 60/40, in terms of 60% think that the current ordinance is not adequate, and about 40% think it is. And then for those that don't think it's adequate, we ask a number of questions so as to get a sense of why they're inadequate. So as soon as we have more results, probably another week or 10 days perhaps, we'll try to make some sense of this, and I'll share it around to see if Council wants to do anything with it. Also, we're advised today that six plover chicks are running about Higgins Beach, and it all happened on one day.
Two days.
Two days. And I think we are past the egg-laying and portion of pine cone as well, so chicks are abound. There's still some reason for concern, but they're at least mobile at this point. Two final things. Thank you for the meeting accommodation. I'll be on vacation next week. Our meeting would have been next Wednesday, and I very much appreciate Council St. Clair. She, this is her week of vacation, and she agrees with the accommodation. And I want to welcome Tracy Cole, who's, who's learning the souls of the trade, and she picked a good meeting to be at, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we start down this end with Council Colman?
So it's summer, I'm going to be really brief. First, I'm glad to hear about the plovers. I, every time, I kind of giggle every time I hear about the plovers only because I think it was the 300th anniversary book is actually a recipe for plover pie. So I was going to crack a joke and ask, does it have plovers to make a pie now? I did want to mention, you know, where summer is? Yeah, you know, hey, gotta be able to plop. You know, it's summertime, I hope people get out and enjoy Scarborough because it's definitely gorgeous this time of year, and hopefully they partake in visiting some of our local restaurants because they're all great. Had a chance to go down to Bailey's, the base tent, after we passed the agreement, the contract agreement, and they had that fully running, it was working awesome. You know, it was actually free. So it's not that they're charging, so that's what people were concerned about, but it was free, and then you tipped the LA guy. So it was great, and it worked awesome, so that was a great night. And you know, the only call that if you get as a councilor after 15 years usually, it's like, for some reason, there's a lot of citizens that think that we're relationship managers and sense that we're there to kind of negotiate arguments between neighbors, and so this week, of course, I'm getting the phone calls from the neighbors, those who agree with fireworks ordinance and those who disagree with fireworks ordinance. And my only recommendation is maybe you should walk out and introduce yourself to your neighbor and solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Will?
I'm going to defer my time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Karen.
I just want to thank the Scarborough Police. I'm one of the people who did sign up for the Code Red notices, and if you're interested in getting notifications from the police department on any particular issues in your neighborhood, you can also get storm warning notices. There's all sorts of things you can get through Code Red. I live not too far from where that largest heroin bust in Maine happened, and I did get, I was sitting at my computer working, and I got this, all of a sudden, text came across my computer, and my phone started buzzing, so go into lockdown. And I was like, what? But it was, thankfully, we have that in town, and I think if you're interested as a constituent of ours, please contact the police department, they'd be happy to walk you through how you can sign up for that. It's real easy. Also, Operation Hope is looking for angels during the day, and angel is a person who's willing to put in the time and effort to work directly with persons who show up at the police station looking for help with addiction problems. They make phone calls and are advocates for folks. They, but during the day is really busy, and it's, I'm, I would love to do it, I would regretfully, but it would be very rewarding if anyone has time and the energy put into that, and be very welcome.
Chief, Chief Moulton is going to be reaching out to the business community, taking really page from the old call division. You know, you had local businesses, employers that support their employees to respond to calls. We're hopeful that local businesses might allow some of their employees to be angels during the day, so.
And then my last thing is, it's really, I've been out talking to a lot of, lot of people recently on another quest of mine, and I just wanted to clear up some misperceptions regarding the role of school funding formula. Yeah, the school funding formula with the state, I don't think anyone's particularly looking to change it. Maybe some tweaks here and there, but changing the formula is not on anyone's radar per se. However, I do, I'm going to put a plug in for, you know, it does make a difference about how much money's going in at the top of the funnel, so to speak, and would increase the amount available, even to a town like Scarborough, which will eventually be one of these schools that, excuse me, one of these school departments that just be minimal, what we call minimal funding. So I just wanted to make sure that anyone who's listening understands that, yeah, school funding formulas aren't going to change, but making, putting in more money at the top of the funnel would be huge, even for a town like Scarborough. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Avery.
Yeah, I think I'll take a slightly different tack today, tonight. Certainly for me, the past week or so, with all the events that have been happening have just been really sobering, but sometimes out of issues like that comes some positive silver linings. And a couple of things I'd just like to say, I think the chief of police in Dallas is just amazing leadership in that community. And on that, I encourage people go out to the Scarborough Police Facebook page. The amount of support that the local Scarborough Police Department has gotten from people who are walking in with food trays, there's stopping officers on the street. I sure hope that as a nation, as a community, we can come together like that. So I was really proud of Scarborough for how they've reached out to support our police department. So thanks for all of you that did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kay.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say, you know, happy summer. It's nice to, for the first time in my public career, is it worth to not be fighting about budgets this time of year? So I certainly do appreciate that. It's been a very enjoyable summer for me so far. I, I also would like to just take an opportunity to say, I know tensions run high with certain hot button issues like fireworks and dogs and things like that, but let's just remember, we're all in the same town, we're all neighbors. Let's just keep our heads calm, and let's, you know, if there's something that needs to be tweaked and adjusted, then I think we'll get to that point, but, you know, we don't need to escalate this into something that it's not. And let's just be civil to each other and enjoy the rest of the summer, because we'll have plenty of opportunity in months to come to have debates and discussions about many, many different topics.
Thank you. I think you're all familiar with Mike Shaw, the DPW director, does a terrific job for us, and I just wanted to let people know these. He is working on additional composting ideas. We will probably have an energy committee meeting in August to further advance those, so that's, that's going to be potentially an additional element to the composting that we have put in place already. I saw an article in the Press Herald a few weeks ago that, and I'll just read you a brief part of it. It said, "The Urban Dictionary," I didn't know what an urban dictionary was, yet it exists. Explanation of eco guilt is the feeling you get when you could have done something for the environment but consciously made the decision not to. It can strike you when you walk past the sign at the grocery store that reads, "Did you remember your reusable bags?" It can arise as you sit in your idling car listening to an NPR story on warming oceans. It can present itself when you notice your morning banana is sporting a sticker quote from Guatemala. Well, I have suffered composty eco guilt for decades and decades. I've never done anything about it, but in recent weeks, I have finally started putting my compostable material aside, and when I go down Pleasant Hill Road, it, there's containers right there, and I am dropping it off, so that I have gone from both eco guilt and eco indifference to having a feeling that I'm starting to do the right thing. So I ask everyone to join, all of us who are making that effort for the first time in our lives. So with that, I will ask for a motion. Would you?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.